Testing.
That one works.
Test one, two. Testing.
That one works, right? Here. That one worked.
Test.
Yep. That one works. This one's just dead. I'll reset it. It works.
Testing, testing. Okay, it's Thursday, March 20th, 2025, 6:06 PM. We're going to start our school building committee meeting. We're going to start off with the open meeting roll call. Brian Silvia.
Here.
Dave Palazzetti.
Here.
Brian Mahoney.
Here.
Chip Magare.
Here.
Terry Lynch.
Here.
Jim Manny.
Here.
Michael Pedraza.
Here.
Bob Littlefield.
Here.
And Kate Massenanti and Luke Murray will be joining us shortly. Number two, public correspondence. I did not see any in the email chain. Did you guys have any public correspondence? Nope. Left field's indicating no public correspondence.
We did receive one email from Dorold Beasley regarding the mass timber framing requesting us to do some further investigation on that.
Okay, thank you. So, number three was discussion updates that are being sent to town council to be posted on website. I wasn't sure, was it Kate, was this yours or was it something Luke might have? Or Kate?
This agenda item was just to discuss the biweekly updates that are, we have a report that gets sent to town council biweekly for, to give them just an update on the project. It kind of goes through the meetings that have been held to date, current status of activities, a financial statement, a schedule update. So, the request is that those reports get published to the website so they're available to the public. So, that was the discussion Kate Massenanti wanted to have.
Okay. Does anybody currently have any discussion on that, any further to report out to town council biweekly? Okay. When Kate does arrive, I'll re-bring up that topic just in case she has any input on that. Okay, we'll move on to discussion item four. The discussion action, phase two environmental study, contract award recommendation.
I'm not sure if this needs to be voted on to remove from the table. It was tabled at the last meeting, just as an order of process.
So, it's, yeah, so we tabled and then we have it here.
Okay, so.
And it does have action involved with it, so.
So, this one where we did receive additional proposals, two additional proposals that were requested in addition to the pricing we received for Ty and Bond to perform a phase two environmental site investigation. This is following our phase one environmental site assessment that was performed by Ty and Bond, which is just a historical study of the site and identifying any potential risks to the, to the site from an environmental perspective. So, there are a couple of areas that Ty and Bond had identified as additional study, that they were looking to do additional study. They provided a proposal to do that work. We then went out on the master purchase agreement and procured additional quotes from all of the pre-qualified firms that bid on the phase one, just to get a little bit of competition, make sure that we have the right scope of work. Those did come in this afternoon. So, Luke and I did speak a little bit about this earlier today. I have done a cursory review of them. I would like to do a further in-depth review because my initial review noted that the proposals are not exactly equal. So, I'd like to do some further investigation with our hygienist that we're working with, as well as our civil engineer, to make sure that we have the correct scope of work identified. I don't want to award a contract or recommend an award of a contract at this time before I've done that due diligence work.
Okay, so would the recommendation be to move it to our next meeting? Okay, does anybody have any further discussion about that contract?
So, that's not going to put us behind. Is that accurate?
That's correct. We don't need that information until before we go in the ground. It'll be important to have as part of our DD estimate. However, that's again, as we've talked about, until, not until May. So, I think if we push out the award another two weeks, it still gives enough time for them to do their survey work.
All right, then I'll make a motion to move that item to the next school building committee meeting.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 That passes. Okay, item number five, discussion Ride meeting update Wednesday, March 12th, 2025.
Yes, so we had a, a good, very in-depth meeting with Ride on the 12th. We were lucky enough to have Superintendent Pedraza and Dr. Magare join us for that meeting. It was great to be able to talk through the program of the space with Dr. De Silva up at Ride and kind of walk him through all of the changes that have been made to the floor plan. A lot of things he was very excited about, a couple of things he wanted some further study and exploration on. So, the request from Dr. De Silva was to submit an amendment to our SD package that includes all of the changes that have been made to date that SLAM has been working on. So, while they are working on buttoning up those changes to our site and floor plans that have been reviewed with this committee, we're anticipating middle of next week to resubmit that to Ride and then have a second follow-up meeting with Dr. De Silva just to review the packages that have been submitted. Following that, we are looking to have kind of a quarterly check-in with them just to keep them abreast of the progress of the project as we move through design development. There was also conversation regarding what we just discussed with our environmental site assessments. So, keeping him in the loop on what's happening with the award of the contracts and the scope of work that's being proposed. Another conversation was regarding the guaranteed maximum price, which is the construction contract. So, the request has been made to explore having a full guaranteed maximum price at the completion of design development, which we, is, is not, we're, we're going to work with Gil Bane to identify what that looks like, to identify the contingencies and allowances and exclusions that would need to be in place in order to make that happen. Because at the end of design development, we are not complete with the bidding documents. Those plans have not been bid out yet. They're not constructable yet. So, we're, we're working on a kind of pros and cons approach to be able to present to this committee to have a formal response to that request. We have reached out to other consultants in the state of Rhode Island. It is not something that is being pursued on any other school project in the state. But, we are going to do our due diligence with Gil Bane and do a thorough study of what it would look like for this project to pursue a GMP at the completion of design development.
Is there a, do we have a delta of what the cost of us to do, is that for you or whomever to do that work for something, you know? Is there a cost driver associated with that that ultimately, in order to satisfy a request that is not being requested of any other project potentially going on in the state and for us to put dollars towards fulfilling a request that could be used for other things? Is, is there a cost? I don't know, could, or I would like to discuss amongst this body a, a cost benefit analysis potentially of, of a response or base, base our response as to whether to pursue that if we're talking tens of thousands of dollars in design and man-hours or, sorry, people hours.
That would just have to be redone again anyway. But, I, that's why I just kind of asked Dave if he was comfortable speaking to it because he's had experience with whether that's not with it or.
I mean, not huge experience, but I've never heard of a single, I've never heard of a GMP at DD. I mean, usually even it's after CD and then you start into the project a little bit before you do it. I mean, I, I can understand their desire to get ahead of the potential risk in the environment, the construction environment right now with potential tariffs and things like that we're all kind of aware of. But, then you're guessing and most likely Gil Bane on the business side is going to put a huge contingency on there to protect themselves. And I think we'd actually end up possibly paying more than if we just wait until we have the full spec.
I would agree with you. I've seen, I've seen DD GMPs only in the developer world and that's really just a mechanism for the funding institutions and the financing institutions. But, I agree with you completely. These, these bidders are not, you know, they're not charitable organizations. They are going to make sure that they're mitigating risk. They're doing their, you know, market analysis as well. So, if they are going to put a number and commit to a number before a design is complete, it is going to be a number that has a lot of contingencies in it to be able to allow them to guarantee a cost. I think Kate had a good analogy. You know, it's like asking a contractor to give you a price on the kitchen before you've decided what cabinets you want.
Channeling my inner Dr. Silva though, I'm guessing he would respond, well, as 50% owner of this project, we want to mitigate our risk as well. As, as the owner, what are you, what are we doing to mitigate our risk?
Yeah, so that's why we're, we are working, we, we had another conversation with Gil Bane today about doing that, that study, the cost benefit analysis. You know, we won't be able to have formal numbers assigned to it because we don't have our estimates for DD yet. But, we are looking at studying what the, the pros and cons of both approaches are. So, you know, right now, we're kind of letting you know that this is a conversation that has been had to date and it's something that the team is continuing to study. Gil Bane is putting together a full report to be able to present to this group and to town council to identify both delivery methods and, and both ways of doing this. So, we can also discuss that with Dr. De Silva after we've reviewed it with this committee and town council as well.
Thank you.
Is there something particular or peculiar about our project that, that would, that would warrant them asking for a GMP now as a, with, and us being the only project that is being asked of?
I don't believe it's the only project that's being asked of, but it's the only project. No other project is actually moving forward with a GMP at, at design development. It's not, it's not specific to this project. It's specific to the market and the volatility of the market and the request to have price certainty as soon as possible. I think we just need to understand that that price certainty comes with a tremendous amount of inflation.
The price certainty comes with a price.
The price certainty comes with a price. That's a great way to put it.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything on this particular? Go ahead.
So, so on the, and one thing that I did find very helpful was the thought of breaking the project up into other projects that we can start getting reimbursement sooner. So, for example, if the demolition of Curtis Corner were completed by June 30th of next year, we're in a situation where we can, on September 1st, we can start collecting reimbursement on that particular project. So, I did think, I, that is something, the one thing I really wanted to make sure that came out as part of that because I, I think that would be really good for the town, so.
Absolutely. That's actually what I was going to suggest, that you explain how Dr. De Silva broke that down for us because it was multiple projects that we could do that with and so if you could talk to that. Yeah, so his, his suggestion was a great one. It's breaking up our submission into several different projects so that we can have substant, you know, our reimbursement is triggered by our substantial completion date. So, our reimbursement starts after we're substantially complete. So, if we are able to break our project up into pieces and have multiple substantial completion dates, it means we can start getting reimbursed on sections of the project, which, which is great because we can have, you know, whether it's a substantial completion by floor. Curtis Corner's the, I think the best opportunity to have substantial completion of our demolition and site restoration of the existing school, substantial completion of the field, substantial completion perhaps by floor of the high school. So, we're looking at targeting those reimbursement dates so that we don't have to wait until the following year after the complete building is finished.
Which, am I correct in that, that way, in terms of issuing the bond, it wouldn't be earning interest? We would be able to start paying that earlier because Ride would be, we wouldn't have to. So, if we did it as one package, once, we, we obviously have to put that out there and, and people need to get paid and during that time, the bond is accumulating interest, in which case, if it was just one package, once the entire project were substantially complete, which is years, we then have accumulated years of interest on that. Whereas, if we go in packets, we start paying ourselves back or paying the bond back immediately or in, in smaller chunks, hence reducing the amount of interest earned or owed.
I, I would defer to Brian Silvia on that one, but the, the cash flow begins sooner with reimbursement into the town. That's correct, yeah. We, we would be getting the cash flow, the reimbursements the following year, yes.
I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure I understand why the savings occurs. Because rather than waiting for the three or two years of no payments coming in or minimal, we're able to make larger payments knocking down the size because we're getting reimbursed or Ride's reimbursing, paying it down years earlier.
I also say PEGO does not need to wait until substantial completion. So, that's an initial upfront payment on actual costs that are being incurred. So, there is, there is some cash flow towards the earlier part of the project as well through PEGO.
Just go back to GMP. Out of, out of the box question. I know this is new for Ride bringing this forward and this is obviously a requirement they're asking us for. Is there, in the past practice, things like this that have happened where if multiple districts said, hey, we're all doing projects, is there any way we could move this six months down the line? I mean, every timeline's different, but to, has that in your mind ever happened? Or is this kind of a, a hard deadline that they want that?
It, it's not a requirement. It is a request.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on that line item? Yep, so the next one is discussion hazard land swap update. And we can discuss that, we'll move that to number 10, right above community comment, until Luke Murray arrives and Kate Massenanti is back. So, we'll move on to number seven, discussion permitting schedule, planning board hearings and upcoming public meetings and forum dates.
Sorry, I was just trying to pull up my schedule quickly.
No rush. I'm the fast meeting guy, so we're already ahead. Don't worry about it.
Good, I like it. So, we did, we did have an initial planning pre-application meeting on the 11th that was presented by Studio Jade and Garofalo, our site, as civil engineer. It was just kind of an introduction of the project and also a request to break up the initial application from the master plan.
Combined.
Combined, sorry. Combine those two. So, there was additional information that was requested, a couple of comments regarding landscaping. I'll let Phil kind of walk a little bit through the actual plans that were presented, which are an update from the last ones that we've presented to this group. Talk through some of those comments. Following that meeting, we were requested and are looking to host a public engagement forum that's currently scheduled for April 9th. After the April 9th public engagement forum, we will be going back in front of the planning board for another pre-application meeting prior to the submission of our formal application at the completion of design development. Phil, do you want to come up and walk through those plans?
Sure.
Brian, are you able to pull up the site plans to share on the screen?
Brian, is there any way you could move that image up a little bit, do you think? Just so they could see a little bit more of the, there you go. Great, thank you. So, good evening, everyone. This is a revised site plan that is in response to some of the comments we heard at the preliminary application meeting. The planning board had some concerns about parking along the access road that we added further down Columbia, where one of the existing entry points to the high school is. Working with Sam and SLAM, we felt that adding that additional roadway, that relief up on Columbia starts to really separate bus traffic, which is along School Street at the front of the school, parent drop-off, which is along the back of the school off of Columbia and what we think will be a majority of the student parking in that larger parking area accessible from Columbia Street a little farther down where the existing access point and curb cut is. Overall, they were generally pleased with the plan. They did emphasize that we take a lot of considerations into the landscaping and how we can create that buffer along Columbia to disguise that large parking surface that we have. That's something that our landscape architect is working on and will be presenting at that April 9th meeting. That April 9th meeting will be specifically to address questions, comments and concerns from the abutters and any resident that wants to come and participate and understand the site plan. We'll take that feedback and digest that in preparation for our second pre-application meeting to the planning board. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about this current site plan.
Do you mind getting in a little bit of deep discussion about the conversation we had about the, the drainage, the little blue spots as far as, some people have concerns about it, what they think it's going to be versus what it actually is? Could you talk to that a little bit?
Sure. So, I think it should be stated that technically, you could do very minimum stormwater management because we are knocking down such a large, impervious structure. But, that's not what we want to do. We don't want to do the minimum. We want to improve the stormwater management on this entire site with this new building. Some of that will include both surface stormwater management and maybe some underground stormwater management. Those blue areas currently represent surface stormwater management, which does need to be maintained, however, can look very pleasing. That's where we are identifying the target areas. That's the most appropriate given the slope of the current site. Sam and his staff are currently developing all of the stormwater calculations based on this new design. And as we start to approach that April 9th meeting, we'll have a much better understanding if we need all four, if they are bigger, if they are smaller. I think, you bring up a good point. I think we should have some visuals on what that looks like at that April 9th meeting so that people have an idea of what to expect. We did a number of these in Portsmouth last, about a year ago at their high school. So, I'd be anxious to maybe take some pictures of them, see how they have grown over the last year. We have introduced several subtle curves into the roadways. It tends to slow people down and controls traffic a little bit more. Also creates a little bit more appealing overall aesthetic.
So, one of the things that I like, that I really like about, overall, what's going to happen as a result of this is the amount of traffic that is being taken off of Columbia Street and School Street. For those of you, and Chip, you can speak to it probably better than I do because you live it every day. But, I often am traveling those roads at the 145 to 210 period of time and it's not ideal with the amount of cars, parents that kind of line up on School Street to pick up their kids. They're there at 1 o'clock. They're lined all the way up down to the bowling alley sometimes. It just, having the buses come in, having the parent drop-off and pickup come in, having the students separated from all of it when they're their way out, do have concerns. They are really short spot right now that they use as a really nice racetrack sometimes. When they come out of the back senior lot, they, it's amazing how much speed you can gain at that spot. So, like a long winding road, even though I know it's not like a big, long winding road. But, they'll do their darndest to really pick up speed. So, I want to make sure that we have, you know, clearly ways to mitigate that speed humps if that's an opportunity and/or humans kind of slowing people down. But, that would be my only concern is that long line. Say again? Well. Depends on the human, I guess. But, I, overall, in general though, the improvements that I see for our center of town with this is awesome. So, I don't know if anybody else has any comments or concerns they want to share.
I agree with that, Kate. You know, the one thing that we just have to look at obviously is what we heard in the meeting too about, we just have to make sure that the transition academy and the, and the high school have different starting and end times, which they do, but we just got to make sure that that's the case so we don't create something else. But, just even with the temporary road that we're going to be putting in hopefully, my message, hopefully for the start of next school year with that temporary road, it's going to, it's going to, that in itself is going to improve things. Moving the buses that we have to the front and having the, a longer place for parents to park along a curve so that kids can get in and out, that's going to help with, with the traffic on the streets. And this will continue that because that is the real issue. We want to try and minimize as much as possible the impact to the, to the, to the roads. Ultimately, when you're near a high school, you're going to have issues right around dismissal and arrival. That's, I think people are okay with that. It's just when it goes on for an hour, that's where people start to get frustrated. And I, I really like how this is, this is going to, I believe, minimize that because you're not going to have people spilling out onto the street and that, that's awesome. So, really good job there. And I agree though about the trying to pick up speed because they're high school kids. So, speed humps, speed bumps, that type of thing, I think will certainly help that particular part of it. Of course, there are a handful that just won't care about their cars, but for the most part, I think people get the message, yeah.
A good speed table on the crosswalk's nice. You know, that usually, that usually does it. So, I, I think it's great. I like the curves. I really like that second exit onto Columbia Street. I think it's, it's really good. My two recommendations would be showing the stormwater detention basins maybe in green instead of blue so people don't think they're really lakes because they're never going to be wet. But, it'll just be green. And then the, I don't know. And then the, I don't have a cursor, but I'm going to point. So, those, that one row of parking, right there, on the, the right side. So, if people are pulling in off of the main road into that parking lot, those couple spots there on the corner, there's like four different conflicts because you've got cars coming in to the exit, you've got people trying to leave, and you've got people coming down the road. So, high school kids backing out of that spot just makes me nervous. So, I don't know if we can shift the entrance over or just eliminate that row or a couple of those spots, but I'd be, I'd be concerned if somebody backing out right into another car coming in around the corner.
I think too, Phil, for the, speaking of stormwater, possibly showing on there where in front of Hazard and in the rear of the current high school lot where there is already stormwater systems, maybe just the highlighting because people have no idea. They can see them now and they're, you drive, people drive by it every single day, have no idea it's there. And yeah, right in front of Hazard, there's, if you walked onto the grass, you can see, but you have no idea. So, I think it's a good example, too, in talking about that system of, there's already currently on this site multiple stormwater management areas, so I think that'd be just to add.
And Brian, you make a, you make a good point, and we, we should be using that to create the image of, of these other sites to kind of squash any, any reference to the retention pond that's over, over by Belmont's Market, which is right near the, right near the bike path. Yeah, yeah. We want people to be referring to what's outside, what's outside of the Hazard School and not that.
Anyone else have any questions, comments, concerns? I have a question, and I don't know if it was resolved, but Chip just reminded me when we were with Dr. De Silva, he had mentioned the entrance to the alternative learning to Hazard, and his concern was that it had moved a little bit closer to that intersection. I personally, again, as we've discussed, it's, there's, it's not a high volume. It won't be a high volume spot, especially with the alternative learning and the high school having different timings. And in fact, right now, because of the way the parents line up, it's an issue, it's more of an issue than, than the new design, and that will be eliminated. Did we touch on if we were going, was that talked about with the planning board or?
The location of the curb cuts was not. We do have a traffic engineer that is currently analyzing this plan, and will have some commentary and statements. If we have that before the 9th, that will be part of that presentation as well as the subsequent meeting back to the planning board.
Trying to remember if there was anything else. I think that's all from our perspective that I can think of. Does anybody have any other? Go around one more time. Go.
One more, one more, Kate. On our, on our existing open space, that's going to be our building, our, our building site, it's pretty much surrounded by fencing on, on I think, at least two sides or maybe three?
Of, uh, three, yeah, at least.
Okay. And so, and so, I'm looking at this, at this new driveway, which, which to me seems like a, seems like a great idea. Am I getting ahead of myself by asking, is there going to be similar fencing around the open space when we're, when we're done on, on quote, "The new Hazard Field"?
So, I, so we even have fencing right along that side between that neighbor's house and, and like the South Kingstown sign. There's fencing there now. So, I hear your, your ask, so, so will there be, or is that a decision we need to make?
Yeah, we have not, we have not gone that far yet.
Okay. Is that, is that, that fencing, the existing, I'm trying to think why?
Why, we put it there in the first place?
Yeah, yeah, is, yeah, is that, is that out of, out of respect for our abutters?
Yeah, I don't know.
So, I remember looking at the survey early on. It's a mixed bag out there because some is personal fencing and there was some, there's some, actually, and some encroachment across the property line on some various issues. So, we may not want to touch some areas where we just let well enough alone.
Right.
But I think we need to kind of...
Well, I think that is a great conversation to have at the abutters meeting on the 9th, where they may want it, they may not want it. I know that the neighbor, one of the neighbors doesn't like the fence because it attracts debris and vines and what have you, so I think that's just a good conversation for the 9th. You're late to the party, but if you want to chime in?
So, thanks, sorry, I'm late.
I'm late, too, don't worry.
Good, I'm in good company. I just want to say thanks to Phil and Sam, they did a good job at the planning board. I was also there. One of the central topics, and I don't know, I was listening on my way, but, was landscape. And so, Phil immediately got on the phone the next day, got the landscape architect on board. We're going to be sitting down with the planning director to kind of mark up the plan with the thoughts that we already know what the board's kind of looking for or likely to look for, and melding that with what the comments from the community will say. So, we're, we're well prepared to respond to those comments when we go back, being thoughtful about a lot of the potential nuisance. So, lighting is usually a nuisance, just visual buffers, things like that. Fence, you know, fence can be a four-foot chingle, but you put evergreens in front of it and they serve two separate purposes. So, we're going to put a lot of time and energy into that because it's likely what the planning board's really going to be concerned about.
And, and I can say that I know our landscape architect is following this meeting right now, online. So, hello, Brian.
Another Brian? God. All right. Do we have any other?
Just a reminder, and Phil had mentioned the 9th meeting, and just a reminder, 6th, 8 p.m. at the high school cafeteria for our thousands of fans out there.
And, and that is a meeting that is being hosted by our project team for the abutters. It is not necessarily a school building committee meeting, okay? So, we, it's the way we've done it them in the past as well. It is a public, it is a community forum. Any member of the public can show up. They're welcome to show up, but it is specifically designated for our abutters to ask questions, give concerns, comments, the whole nine yards, so.
Yeah, I, I think it's important to reiterate that. I don't want people coming to the April 9th meetings thinking they're going to see fly through renderings of what the new high school looks like on the inside or something like that. What we've done in the past is prepare flyer, which I've done, which I'll distribute for your review, just to make sure expectations are clearly defined.
All right. Good. All right. I have a question about the business, the agenda items. You did item four, which was the contract award recommendation, yes?
Uh, so, yeah, if we start at two, not two, sorry, three, we did not have discussion on that. We were going to wait, and, oh, we, no discussion at the table, but I did state that we would ask you and Luke again if there was any further, anything you want to see for the discussion update on what's being, on updates that are being sent to town council to be posted on website. And Kate gave us a rundown of what would be sent every two weeks. And then the other item we were going to go back over was item six. For item four, we, the Phase Two Environmental Survey, Kate gave a presentation on that, Kate Turner, and we voted to move that to our next school building committee meeting due to more time for the experts to review.
Oh, so we didn't make the recommendation? You don't have to relive it. I just, I, I, I'll get, I'll, okay, it's pushed to next meeting. Great, thank you.
So, the next item we have not discussed was six. Discussion Hazard Land Swap Update.
Okay. Do you have anything for that, Luke?
Yeah, I'll be brief. So, we're progressing. The appraisal is done. Good news is, as expected, one parcel equates to the same value as the other, which is the requirement. It has to go through what they call a yellow book, book review, which is an appraisal review in accordance with federal standards. So, Sweeney Real Estate have engaged them. That's actively being done, so within the next two weeks, we'll have that piece of information. At that point, I should have everything I need to support the application to submit and get it in, and then we're rolling forward. So, been in communication. I actually left a message with Paul Jordan from D E M. the other day. All is well.
All is well is a good update to have, so thank you. And, permit me, so, a gen, a new business item, Agenda Eight, Discussion Curtis Corner Building and Athletic Field Update.
Thank you. So, we have done a few, we've had a few meetings with Gil Bane to really parse through the latest estimate that we've had based on the design that Phil presented of keeping the field in its existing place, adding some roadways, adding some other additional site improvements, and then creating a selective demolition of the high school to allow for a cold, dark shell of a portion of the building that can be future utilized as a fieldhouse, locker room, weight room, et cetera. So, the pricing is still coming in very high. So, what we did discuss in our meeting is, again, parsing out this project into sections, so focusing primarily on the demolition or selective demolition of the existing high school, the site restoration that would be needed to make that site safe, and then kind of getting a little bit of cost certainty in that, and then moving forward into exploring the scope of the athletic fields after that work is done. That is kind of a priority for this project, making sure we can move that forward. As Chip mentioned earlier, that also helps secure a little bit of reimbursement, some cash flow from the state for that project being complete. We are also discussing the delivery method for those scopes of work. So, right now, we've been working with Gil Bane to provide estimating support and preconstruction services for Curtis Corners. But working with such a large construction manager on this particular scope of work may be a little bit more than we need. So, we are discussing options to looking at directly bidding out the demolition abatement of the school, site restoration, and then future athletic program elements as well.
So, the, the main focus was to bring it to this body, to talk about what that would look like and what that would feel like, and, and pros and cons to doing it. I don't know if you want to get into any of that, or if anybody just out of the gate has any questions of where we're going with that. Go.
So, would Leftfield be managing it then, directly?
Leftfield would manage, with the town, would manage the, the vendors that would be selected for this work.
Would it fall back onto the school department to manage it?
The contractors?
Yeah.
It would, well, the contracts would be through the town, not the school department.
Right. But the site manager for the construction, for the demolition without Gil Bane would have to be Leftfield?
We would have site representation, but not in a construction manager capacity.
So, Dave, we'd go back to standard design, bid, build model, right? And the town, the envision would be the town as a project funder would continue to engage Leftfield as the oversight. As far as the day-to-day, as you know, on a design, bid, build, you'd typically fall in the architect and the engineering team to sign off and, and do the oversight. So, there'd be, have to be some enhanced services there to do the day-to-day.
So, they would, you do the C A. through the architect?
Correct.
And then the town engineer would be involved?
Correct. I mean, to some extent, yes, for, for oversight and stormwater and whatnot, in consultation with O P M. So, it'd go back to a more traditional model that we're used to. We've done projects like that, we're doing Old Mountain like this. This is no different, right? But I, I will give my perspective. I've been on a couple of these meetings, I've seen the estimates. We've got, for a complex school project, like your projects, right, Sam A R., Gil Bane brings a lot of value to the table. On a field project with a basic demolition, there's a concern that there's a lot of overhead being added for not a lot of value. I'm just, I'm just stating that plainly. So, you know, in, in consultation with Leftfield, and there's been some discussion, you know, we might want to look at, at least for the value, a little different direction to go. The benefit we have with Curtis Corner is we have time, right? We can get the demo done, we can see where our costing is. And the field, and Dave, I'll point to you because you have definite construction experience this, there's many companies that can come in and do a field and track pretty easily, right, as a design build. So, I think we got to get a best bang for the buck here. That's my feeling on it. I just, I really feel like Curtis Corner is a different project.
It, it's a fair point up until the synthetic turf field, then I'd be a little nervous. But site, site contractors can do everything except for that field and track. That's got to be a specialty award.
Agreed. And I think we can discuss in more detail if this is something we want to pursue a further discussion on. We can look at, you know, what the additional C A. oversight looks like, what Leftfield's oversight looks like, because we do, as part of Leftfield Services, own a clerk that is going to be onsite. So, we can talk in a little bit more detail about what those scope of services look like, how it would interface with the town, and ensuring that we're pre-qualifying all of the vendors that are getting on our bid list. So, we, there's a lot of work to do to prepare a formal recommendation to move forward with a change in delivery method, but it's just kind of our first pass at starting this conversation because we, we have a lot of pieces of the Curtis Corner project as we've identified, breaking them up into what we'll call phases, right? We have our demolition phase, our field phase, our other site improvement and roadways phases. So, there's a lot of work in there that we can kind of parse out separately and do in these smaller packages, which, again, leans itself towards a little bit more of a direct, a direct bid model.
Yeah, don't, don't get me wrong, I think it's actually a good idea. I think it would save a lot of money and, and the, the base, the demo definitely, and the, and the regrading of the site and everything, I think it's, yeah, it'd be a good way to do it, if you guys are comfortable on the town side doing it.
I also, sorry, I just also want to mention, you know, Gil Bane has been a great partner in this, especially when it comes to working on Curtis Corner. They've provided us with additional estimating services. They've really been a great partner here. So, it, in no way is this a knock on Gil Bane as an organization or their partnership on the high school. This is just looking at this project specifically and what's the most appropriate way to move it forward.
I just want to agree from school representative and working with Gil Bane on site visits for different things over the past six months. Great partner, but I think just to kind of summarize this, it's not a, we don't want to work with Gil Bane issue. Like you said, it's more, we're working within a budget to get the best possible field, to spend the taxpayers' dollar the right way, just like we've had with every other decision. So, if this is the best course of action that gets the best value for our dollar, that's the way we go. So, thank you.
Does anybody else have any thoughts, perspective on it? I mean, I tend to agree with, with what, what's being presented, but we want to, we want this board to be in agreement and also to really think about it. And this is just up for discussion, there's no action tonight, there's no decision. It's just, we're putting it out there. At the end of the day, it is, we've made a promise, A, to be transparent, but B, to make sure we're spending the taxpayers' money wisely. And if this means kind of parsing it out and going out and seeing if there's a cost shrinkage option, if we can go that route, and then it would make the most logical sense. That said, we're full body up for discussion. If anybody wants to have more conversations about it, obviously, the, this will go on for the next couple of meetings, so think, think about it, and definitely, please bring questions to us, to Leftfield, to Phil, to, to, to all of us, so. All right. Thank you for that. That brings us to, um, looks like it brings us to 10?
Nine.
New business item number nine, discussion action. There will be action taken tonight. School building committee member and leadership reorganization. So, as we have, you know, been informed, Mr. Mahoney is going forward, I think after tomorrow, yes? After tomorrow, he will no longer be the facilities and maintenance director for the South Kingstown School District. And while he is a very valuable member of this school building committee, he is sitting here in the role of the facility as a ride required role. As long as he can stay at the table prior to a, his replacement being brought in, and he's here. However, we do need a leadership reorg, so he won't, because his seat is, will be up in the air, we need a new co-chair. Because, well, I've enjoy, I enjoy being the chair, co-chair, and secretary on previous iterations of this team.
For, for the record, I'd like to step down before you kick me out of the chair, so I'm officially stepping down.
But we, yeah, we do need, we need kind of motions and discussions. But we, yeah, we do need, we need kind of motions and discussions as to, as to, need a co-chair to work slightly. So happy to open it up for discussion, happy to open it up for motion, however people want to handle that. And like I said, Brian will stay on, even after tonight's meeting, he will stay as part of this committee until we have a facilities director in place. I don't know what that means once that happens though, because I still believe that the information that Brian has is super valuable and whoever takes his spot is not going to have the level of knowledge about our facilities that Brian has. So I don't know what that looks like as far as, and, and Brian has expressed on more than one occasion that he still wants to maintain an involvement, whatever that looks like, to make sure that we don't miss steps because his knowledge goes away. His knowledge will stay with us. How that looks, is it ad hoc? Is it as a community, just a community member who comes to all our meetings? What that looks like clearly has been sorted out. But up until that point though, he'll be on our committee until a new facilities director is hired. So if people want to discuss who the co-chair should, could be and/or make motions, I'm happy to entertain all of it.
I, hey, who wants it?
Yeah. Who, what's that?
Did you take a hat for it?
I, I will say this. I, and I, there's, there's two people that I would recommend and they're probably both going to be mad at me, but they'll get over it. It would be Chip and Michael Pedraza, I think, especially, and I apologize about this, but as our leader and our superintendent, I think it would be tremendous for him to, to take that role. That's my personal feeling.
So I think at this point in the game, I think it would be important to have someone so closely tied to the schools to, because there are going to be some decisions being made that only people that are closely tied know what they should be. So I don't want to throw anyone under the bus here, but I, I, I do think someone, either the superintendent or the principal should be considered.
I'll make a motion to nominate Superintendent Pedraza to vice chair of the school building committee. And, and I'll just say that I think as the leader, especially getting to this critical stage, having a leadership position is key.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Your second?
Second.
All right. So I have a, I have Luke made the motion, Mr. Pedraza seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right.
I just want it on the record that I didn't make the nomination. I just made the suggestion.
Your service has been completely and utterly appreciated. And I welcome, however, Mr. Pedraza as, as my, I know he's a vice, but I, it is a co-chair. It's definitely shared responsibility. And so I appreciate, I appreciate you stepping up to it and, and I look forward to us making, making progress. As far as, again, what the rest of the body will ultimately look like once the new facilities director comes in, we'll address that when it comes time. Okay. So our next item is community comment. I only see one person out there. You wanting to make a comment?
I just came to get educated.
You just came to get educated. I like your style. All right. So seeing no other community members, that brings us to 11, where discussion action, next meeting date, time, and potential agenda items. While I was not here, did we go over the, I know we did the public forum dates. So we, I have a question about, so the April 9th is the abutters. Will we be planning another public forum in general? That's not just for the abutters, but for the whole, like, this is our new design project. Is that like after DD or right before DD or how does that look?
Yeah, I think right before the completion of DD, we'd look to hold another community engagement session that's more focused on the, the entirety of the project versus just the site. And we'll do, we'll do another one following that. So we've got about two more, at least two more community engagement sessions that we're looking to hold.
Great. Thank you. Okay. So with that said, our next meeting. So we have, it would be April 3rd here at 6:00. And then the abutters meeting is a Wednesday on the 9th. So our next business meeting here, April 3rd, 6 o'clock. And again, we have, so we are tabled, we've tabled one agenda item that will carry over. And did we do any others? No. Okay. So again, if there's any other agenda items that anybody wants to make sure, please don't hesitate to email me. And I'm going to talk until 7:00 so we can make it.
I'm going to make the motion adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Our, oh, it just turned 7:00. Our meeting adjourned at 7:00.
Brian Mahoney, fast meeting.